Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November thirteenth regular meeting of CIO Planning Commission. And if you'll just second, I need to start the backup. And if you'll join me by standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as well.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chang, present. Commissioner Hume.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Reiser.
Present.
And Commissioner Coleridge.
Present.
Of course.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda, are there any changes or revisions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So.
All right. Moved by Reiser, supported by Hume. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Then we'll go to public comment. People wishing to address the planning commission on matters which are not, we don't have a public hearing on any matters or any portion of the agenda or seek information. Such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except for a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes to address the commission. With that, I'll open the public comment at seven oh one. We don't have anyone in township hall who is here for public comment. How about our public online? Or no hands raised? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner Chang. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving on to communications and correspondence. I have not received any correspondence, has anyone else? All right. Yeah, we have no public hearings this evening, so we're moving to new business. And we have possible action on site plan number two, three, oh, one, eight, Slim Chickens, a new restaurant with drive-through. And we'll welcome the applicant. I believe we have someone here in person and some folks online. Typically, what we do is we have a presentation by the applicant. And then any questions of fact from the commissioners. We move to our planning consultant, our engineering consultant, and then any sort of deliberations ongoing. All right. So with that, if the applicant would like to introduce themselves.
I'm Ethan Wood with North West Engineers. We're the civil engineer. And then on mine, we should have Kara from Plaza Street Partners, who will be doing the presentation.
I don't have Kara, I have my Lena.
Lena?
Rayanne. Rayanne is on. Oh, Melina got my request, she's rejoining as a panelist, and Rayanne is. There's no Kara. Expect us to get here, so.
Norrie's Kara will be joining us this evening. This is right on Plaza Street Partners, here to present on behalf of the applicant this evening.
All right, welcome. So are they able to go ahead and share their screen?
Yeah, Rayanne, go ahead and see if you can, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, perfect. I'll go ahead and get started. You all should remember this concept and from the hearings in August and September for the drive-through use. But I will touch base on that and try to refresh your memory on, see if you guys have any questions. So this is where proposed Slim Chickens. The property is located off of South Zee Road and Arbor Chase Drive, just south of the Leo's Comey Island and north of Cambridge Club Apartments. About Slim Chicken, so Slim Chickens is a chicken concept. They have a focus on hand-breaded chicken tenders. They are known for their array of different kinds of sauces that they make in-house, fresh ingredients, they also serve grilled chicken salads and desserts of that nature. The brand was originally started in Bentonville, Arkansas. And they are rapidly growing. They currently have over a hundred and fifty locations. And over the next ten years, expecting to have around eight hundred. You can see the map here on the right of the markets they're entering and currently in. A little, the next page is just the menu, just kind of what I had already touched on a little bit. About the operator, so for this particular location and other locations in this area in the greater Detroit market, they'll be operated by three individuals, partners that are local to Michigan, just based about an hour away from Ann Arbor, actually. They have a lot of experience in operating restaurants with over ten years operating Jimmy John's locations throughout Michigan. They're very excited about the Slim Chickens brand. This Ann Arbor location would be the second location to open in their pipeline. Just real quickly about Plaza Street Partners, so that is the company that I'm with. We are the preferred developer of Slim Chickens and their franchisees. So we partnered with some great leads to help them grow the brand throughout the Michigan area. We have a lot of experience with Slim Chickens. We've built over fifteen, and we're actively working on over ten projects currently, right now, including this one. As you can see on the screen, currently showing you the elevations of these Slim Chickens. This is their newest prototype. It's a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot building, and then it has a about a four-hundred-and-ten square-foot patio that, for this particular location, would front Zee Road. The prototype's neutral colors, they have a little bit of red accents to match their logo. The finishes are mostly brick and nichihaw and a little bit of metal siding. To give you a feel, this kind of just shows you exactly which elevation would be facing each road. So as I mentioned, the main patio would face Zee Road. The main entrance of the building, where you see this red door here, would face Arbor Chase Drive. The rear elevation, which would be kind of the back entrance and where the cooler is, would face a landscape buffer to the west. That's in between ours, property and the apartment complex. And then the drive-through area would face to the south, where there's also another landscape buffer between our property and Cambridge Club Apartments. Here's some pictures of other locations that are open. Already, they, you'll see they're a little bit different, but kind of give you a feel of the brand. Here's some photos of the inside as well. And real quickly, just a refresher on the operations of the restaurant. The interior has approximately sixty-six seats. The patio can seat up to thirty-two individuals. In regards to the hours of operation, they're ten-thirty to ten during the weekdays, ten-thirty to eleven on the weekends, being Friday and Saturday. There's generally about twelve employees during one shift, and they hire approximately forty to fifty employees per location. Deliveries are generally two to three times a week, depending on the volume of the store. But the delivery trucks would show up in the early morning before business hours to kind of avoid any traffic conflicts. The drive-through, we're currently showing an eighteen-car stack with two menu boards to help allow cars to enter and exit the drive-through as efficiently as possible. If there's, for any reason, like a busy peak hour with a lot of cars in the drive-through stack, employees are trained to go out and take orders with their iPads, as well as tell cars to pull forward, to bring their orders out, to keep things moving. There's also, Slim Chickens offers curbside to-go and mobile order pickups as well. And now on my screen, I'm showing the site plan, which is what we're all here to discuss today. From the original hearing for the conditional or special use permit, there hasn't been very many significant changes. We've worked closely with the engineering and planning staff and consultants to address all of their questions, which is why they've recommended us for approval here today. But we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. It's Tim, is that question? Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I'm available for any questions as needed.
You said that there's a second Slim Chickens in their pipeline, I'm sorry, this is the second Slim Chickens in their pipeline. Where's the first?
The first one hasn't started construction, but it would be in grand blank.
I have a question about the drive-through. Could you go back to that slide, please, and thank you? Maybe it's one back or right there. Uh, here. Right there. So it's an eighteen-car stack with two menu boards. So does that mean two lanes? Cars will come in in two lanes?
That's a great question. If I can zoom in here on the site plan.
I have it in front of me, but it's small font, but go ahead.
Yeah. So it's actually, it's one lane that then they can expand into two, so there'll be two menu boards. So you'll see one lane here and one lane here, and then they'll merge into one lane for the pickup.
So how many, is there one window for paying and one window for pickup? Or is it?
There is just one window where people will pay and pick up.
Okay. And so they'll come in on two lanes, and they'll get the order, but eventually they'll alternate into one line, is that correct?
Correct.
And then they stack the eighteen, you say you'd count from where your cursor is to the left, and that that occupies eighteen, is that what I understand is to be correct? Or does the stacking include out into the parking lot?
It does not include going out into the parking lot, so the eighteen is just what's shown.
So there's eighteen rectangles, if I were to count them?
Yes, correct. I just counted it to triple check for your showing correctly on the plan, but yes.
And then, and then where would? Because I went to Panera the other day, not that you're Panera, and you went through and they had you park somewhere, and you waited there for ten, fifteen minutes for them to bring you out something. So where are you, where are you gonna park those cars?
So we have parking space here. Along the.
Is that for general public or for drive-through people who have special orders or whatever, and they have to put them somewhere?
So right up here, we generally dedicate three parking spots for pull-forward orders, as we call it. Those are, you know, if someone comes and orders a lot of food, so that it kind of backs up the rest. The average drive-through wait time is four minutes. And they're seeing that kind of go down more as they're creating other efficiencies with the iPad services. If you've been to Chick-fil-A and people are standing outside taking your order to continue them to move, so it would likely be three.
And then you said your model is a lot of outdoor seating, correct? That's one of your, you guys feature that?
Yes, there's thirty-two seats for the patio.
Could you, could you hover your mouse around that general area? I think, I think I know where it is. Yeah, it's my understanding of where it is, right there. That's in the front as it faces Zee, is that correct?
Correct.
And, 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 uh, will people, will they enter through the patio, or do they enter through a different door, then go out to the patio, or how does that work? What I'm, what I'm gonna get at is, uh, safety, pedestrian safety for the people who are coming and going, um, the drive-throughs, that kind of thing. How do, what assurances do we have that those people are as safe as they can be from cars?
Yeah, of course. So I know it's hard to see with the font here, but there's gates on either side of the patio for access, so to the north and to the south. The majority of customers are likely gonna park along the north side of the building or along Zee, but most likely the north side, and then enter the patio through here. Or there's the main entrance to the restaurant, right here, which is close to the ADA ramp, and then they can enter the patio from the inside. Because they're gonna need to order their food from the front of the building, it's most likely that they're gonna enter from the main entrance and then use the indoor patio, or the interior door to get to the patio. I believe, I'm trying to see the dimensions here. There's between six to ten feet of sidewalk between the patio and the parking lot, which is a pretty decent amount, that's a couple steps. So someone would have to be really not paying attention to just walk into traffic. It's something that we've discussed with the brand, but there's also a railing that surrounds the entire patio for safety as well. Check and see if I have a picture of.
And can I ask you where your dumpster's gonna be and where food's gonna be dropped off? The reason I ask is to, just to the south is going to be residential housing. I guess it is already there and you're not. So there's an apartment complex, maybe condos, but just to your south. So what time is the beep-beep-beep of the dumpster and the clang of the dumpster gonna go on and the loading of the food? When you say early, in Ann Arbor, they start picking up dumpsters at four-thirty or four o'clock or whatever. What time do you anticipate your dumpster pickups and your food drop-offs?
Um, so the dumpster, I'm not sure what the exact timing is locally, that's something we could definitely figure out, but I imagine it'd be the same time they're picking up the apartment complex's dumpsters, especially if you're using the same service. But our dumpster's located in the back of the site here. There's about, there is a fifty-foot buffer between the condos, the Arbor Chase condominiums and our property, that's gonna be landscaped heavily to help reduce the noise. So that's in regards to dumpster for, and to the east or to the west. To the south, there's also existing landscape buffer of a lot of significant number of trees, and those have to maintain as part of an agreement as well, so that will help with noise. The timing of the deliveries, similar to, like Cisco's the general provider of a lot of these food items, especially for QSRs in the area. So what you're probably seeing for the deliveries for Burger King, Panera is gonna be likely around the same time for the Slim Chickens.
And then are you gonna have recycling? Or is that too much hassle, just throw it all out?
That's a great question. I actually do not know the answer to that question, to be honest, and I don't wanna give you the incorrect one. So that's something I'd have to go back and ask the operations team.
All right, I think I've used all my questions for this week and next week, so I'll yield back.
I would say the correct answer would be that you will have a recycling bin as well as a trash bin, but I don't know that you do because it isn't showing on the plans.
And that was just, what is the dry storage next to the, because it does look like it's only sized for a dump, one dumpster. And, you know, if you have recycling, you have a space issue unless the dry storage is somehow recycling.
Dry storage is not a true.
Yeah, that area is designated for, you know, overflow dry storage, but, and I believe as it's currently shown, as you had mentioned, Dan, that that's just for, it looks like just for one dumpster. We could look into recycling bin in the dry storage area or increasing the dumpster enclosure, but that's something we'd have to discuss as a team.
Other questions?
In a day, about how many cars do you think would go through the drive-through?
Um, I would have, that's a good question. I'd have to pull up my, the traffic study, there's a general number that they use for fast-food restaurants, but to kind of give a general comparison of volume, I think this is something I'd mentioned during the drive-through review hearing, but Slim Chickens generally do about two-point-two to two-point-four million dollars in sales annually in comparison to Chick-fil-A, who does six to eight million, so it's a, in sales. So it's a significantly less number of cars and volume that you'd see in relation to McDonald's or Chick-fil-A. I will say that, you know, when there's a restaurant that opens, it's gonna be a lot busier within the first two weeks to a month, and you'll see, you know, the drive-through pretty heavy. And then it's generally after the three months where it just black-hoes, and you don't really see the, the extreme traffic from everyone being excited about the new opening.
I guess it all.
Um, could you talk a little bit about, there's a request around the landscaping and the foundation landscaping? Can you kind of discuss what was possible, what wasn't possible, and what deviate, what you're proposing?
So I can speak to that. So the request that we're making is not for any alteration for the number of landscaping. We're providing the entirety of the landscaping that is required, even for the foundation landscaping. What we're requesting is to place it elsewhere in site. And the reason we are making that request is because due to the site size and site constraint, there is very minimal room to put foundation landscaping. However, we are able to locate the required number of trees and shrubs elsewhere on site. And I believe where our landscape architect has located them is in the island that is behind the building, so it's as close to the building as possible it could be.
Like buffering between the residence?
It's along the parking area, you know, is where the drive-through is.
The south and the west.
Yeah, it's up by the parking, yeah.
So for buffering for the neighboring properties, there's already a very dense screening there. Standing on Arbor Chase, you really can't actually see the residential property, property to the south. And the landscape plan promotes keeping as many trees as possible, as well as maintaining that a similar nature buffer of the trees that are proposed there. And then even along the west side, the, the trees that are proposed are very good at screening. Those trees are.
Yeah, they're, they're on every.
So the, the request for the foundation landscaping is just that be placed not immediately next to the building, but elsewhere on site. So it's not a, a number, but a location. And the issue is how tight the site is. There's only a hundred and, there's less than a hundred and forty feet of frontage. So to squeeze in sidewalks and drive aisles and parking and everything else to it is the hindering factor.
A couple of questions following up on the landscaping. I noticed you had a whole bunch of turf grass in the back, and there really isn't, I'm just wondering, there isn't really, are you using that turf grass for anything? Or just wondering why that wasn't done in a, you know, a more of a native landscaping option or opportunity there, unless you have a specific purpose for that turf grass?
But I believe the intent was to complement the bioswell that's back there. The bioswell is a opportunity to add landscaping and also provide that strong water management.
This is directly behind where you have the, where you said you put the additional landscaping for the, the foundation planning. I'm just wondering, you know, you have turf grass, you have the, I think, is it a transformer back there that's surrounded by some evergreens? Then you have a row of trees with, but they're in kind of formal planting as, and then the rest of it is turf grass. And I'm just wondering, why do turf grass there when there really isn't a purpose to turf grass, and we could do something that was more native landscaping?
That you wouldn't have them out and be better for the environment, unless you're putting in a golf course.
There, if that's a request, we can certainly consider that.
And was there, the other thing is, you know, the patio is, has a little bit of a covering on it. And then it looks like in some drawings, you have some string lights. So some questions about, and it's in a very, I don't know, it's surrounded by concrete. You have a little bit of landscaping by kind of one of the entries. I'm just wondering, has there been any thought to, do they typically do shade umbrellas? You know, just to make it a nicer space, you know, you can do, you can hang, you could do a little bit more, you know, plantings and so forth around the railings. I'm just trying to, if you don't do foundation planning around the building, the whole idea is to provide some greenery, you know, so there isn't building concrete paving and to break that up. And just wondering if, you know, what you do with the patio. And if you're doing string lights, I don't know how that relates to the lighting ordinance because that certainly, those are not dark sky lighting things. So a couple of questions just around that dining patio.
Rayanne, did you have any comments on it?
Um, if, let me see if I can share my screen again here. There are some plannings proposed along the patio, might be hard to see on either side of the entrance here to one patio door and then along the southern side. So I think that will help, it's kind of hard to visualize now, I think that'll help break up the concrete, though, in regards to that. The string lights are something that's up to the operator on if they want to hang those, or some operators do have patio umbrellas. It's kind of an option on which one. So if you'd like our operator to look into either or neither of those dependent on this particular location, you can certainly ask them as well.
Do we have to take the lighting into account for illumination, or is it?
I don't know how we deal with decorative lighting like that.
Typically decorative lighting like that in other, in other communities, we've dealt with it. It's just aesthetic, it's not, it doesn't really produce any, I mean, unless they're, you know, typically these string lights, the bulbs, they don't produce any real amount of light. Typically, they're shut off also at closing time. So it's not like a, it's not like a car dealership, you know, or other parking lot lighting. It's more of an architectural feature. But we can look into the illumination level, if that's something that you.
Any other questions before we go to our reviews?
I have, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed that you're meeting the minimum parking requirements, forty-one, I think, for the site. Is that just because you're trying to meet the minimum parking requirements? You think you actually need forty-one spaces here?
It's, it's a combination of the two. So based on other, other sites that is compliant with what they expect to possibly be needed at the most. Additionally, that is to meet the minimums or requirements as well.
I guess what I, what I was getting at, though, is that I think that the minimums here are probably too high, and I wanted to get a understanding if you thought that you actually needed forty-one spaces.
Again, with anything further for, for that, I would, I would defer to Rayanne and see if she had any additional comments on it.
The Slim Chicken corporate standards, are they preferred to have between thirty-five and fifty? The Slim Chicken corporate standards, are they preferred to have between thirty-five and fifty um parking spots for each location, so that forty-one minimum kind of. Sits perfectly with brand standards. Um, we like to ensure, um, you know, I mentioned there's about ten to twelve employees per shift, so we have to account for. The spots backed by the dumpster closure will likely be all dedicated to employees, so we always want to ensure that the remainder um for the customers, so. Um, in summary, forty-one is pretty in line with what we basically.
Um, I have a question about the the curb cuts for the driveway entrances, they seem pretty um rounded out. Uh, is there any reason that they couldn't be squared up? Uh, the reason I'm asking this is because uh rounded entrances and exits tend to encourage faster vehicle traffic. Wonder if we could. I guess do some traffic calming by squaring out those curb cuts.
What do you mean by square it up?
Well, so you're up, you only actually need to say on the on the uh left side of the of the page. Um, you only need thirty feet of an opening, but you have that swooping. That opening, it's like a bell, right, that is rounding out the curb. That is what I'm talking about, if you were to square that off where you're only using the thirty feet or at least less. Uh, belled out so that we're not encouraging faster vehicle traffic, so entering or exiting, sorry. It forces them to slow down, right, because we're having to make a sharper turn.
Uh, in my opinion, a smaller radii, making that connection would be inoperable, um, we have to be able to get in fire trucks. And garbage trucks and delivery trucks, um, anything less uh would not allow for that. Those vehicles to enter the site, and it would probably make it quite difficult to even get like a truck in sight.
That's their problem.
That those are typical driveway dimensions, um, similar to elsewhere, like even across Arbor Chase, has a similar driveway dimension as a.
There, I think we've got lots of them here.
You don't have a, you don't have a lot of space here, yeah.
Get smaller fire trucks too.
Yeah, micro fire.
Yeah. No, no, I have a question.
But yeah, go ahead.
Um, I know that we're probably gonna get into it a little bit in uh the reports that are coming, but. There was one request from the uh Board of Trustees. That there be an access pedestrian access off of Arbor Chase Drive and off of Zee Road. And I'm pretty sure that the Zee Road is not on your, I mean, there's no. Defined walkway coming off of you, so I think what you're, how could you describe how you as a pedestrian would get from. Walking along Zee Road into your uh building, what would be the pathway to Zee?
That's your travel path from Zee Road would be up to the sidewalk along Arbor Arbor Chase Drive. And then west to the crosswalk that's being provided that lines up with the eighty-eight handicap stalls.
So somebody's somebody's drawing it online, you're red, right?
Yep, you can see that, yep, so the we.
I don't know what you asked, John, because I was trying to ask. It's in red. I see that, and so you would have to cross the uh entrance, I mean, sorry, exit that is to the. Uh, east of that crosswalk, you have the vehicle entrance and exit.
Exit, exit only, um.
Exit only, so that's an exit.
Yep, so.
So you would have to cross that to get to the island. And then you'd have a crosswalk defined to come across the parking lot, but there's no. Crosswalk across that exit to warn the drivers that there's pedestrians, that's where I was going.
So we we did consider that comment and that suggestion, um, the. And we are complying with it for Arbor Chase. Um, however, the our concern with providing a crosswalk in front of the building from Zee Road directly to. Um, the patio would be it crossing the um exit lane for the drive-through. Um, because we were worried about drivers and their being able to pay attention, uh and.
This is where I'm talking about, so that so that if there was a crosswalk here. It would, it would allow the pedestrians to have a defined walkway that. Vehicles coming up to it would see that there was pedestrian traffic potentially.
You're just asking for it to be striped?
Yes, I, that's what I was hoping that you could do.
I don't see any issue with that, we can do that.
I don't know whether the rest of the commission would find it helpful to have that, but I wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, and while we're talking about the pedestrian access, is it just um. Just curious why um typically the barrier free are supposed to be the closest parking lot is parking spaces to the front door? And it would seem like if you did those at the front door and had the walkway going straight to the front door. People might be more inclined to use it as opposed to cut cutting through the parking space.
So the ADA stalls are the closest as they can be to the front door, and the reason is the ramp that's in front of them. Um, because you have to have eight feet to make up the basically the six inch six inch reveal and the ADA requirements, uh the. ADA spots cannot be moved.
Oh, and then so the door, the floor elevation of the building.
Right, yep, you you go up, you make up that six inches from the the parking lot to the finished floor elevation of the uh of the building.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, I I was leading the witness and I didn't want to let go.
Yeah, because you could have that the crosswalk stripes and those driveways, actually.
Wouldn't that have to be done anyways? No, okay.
It's private property essentially.
If we ask for it, it might get done.
That is actually across, I'm sorry, um, that that is actually in the right of way of Arbor Chase. Typically, they they don't do the pedestrian crosswalks unless you're at a intersection. Because it gets a little repetitive, um, so it may have to be something that actually gets brought up to the road commission.
You're saying that that is in the right of way of Arbor Chase Drive?
Yes.
And but wouldn't you have to do the curb cuts and the, you know, along there anyway, so?
And we're showing, we're showing curb cuts at the driveways, um, it's a it's a level crossing, it's eighty-eight compliant crossing. Um, the the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk is right next to Arbor Chase, so that is. Um, just on the other side of the the property line, it's on the right of there.
Yeah, do you want to kind of walk through the signage, that the directional signage and the stop signs and just sort of, you know, sort of as you enter the site, how you get? How you know which way to go, et cetera?
Sure, um, so there's a enter sign at the uh western entrance, which would be the only entrance. Uh, then what, as you pull in, uh, there are directional arrows marked on the pavement. Uh, everything north of the building is two-way traffic, so if you were to turn into. Um, the site and then turn towards the east, uh, you could park or you could um exit there. And then there are additional uh pavement striping. Uh, wrong way, do not enter signs to prevent any traffic from going the wrong way of the uh drive-through exit. Uh, and then vice versa, if you enter that one-way or enter the two-way drive aisle. Uh, and then turn towards the west and go around the site, then you may enter into. Uh, either of the drive-through lanes or uh exit and bypass around. And again, have another ha- have additional parking on the frontage of the uh building as well.
And where's the directional signage, i- so somebody going to the drive-through comes in, turns left. Um, how do they, how are they guided to the drive-through other than you can kind of almost see it?
They would, they would either have to park or they would have to pull into a spot and turn around if they wanted to go back to the drive-through, but it it would be something that we would, we would expect people to. Have been there and before, and it's a typical layout for a a restaurant as well.
You have signage, right?
Yes, we have signs at the the entrance, um, we have. Uh, the pavement markings, and then we have uh wrong way, do not enter signs, uh preventing traffic from going the wrong way of the drive-through.
Sure, um, so we already discussed a lot of these, but um I wanted to touch on that the board granted the conditional use approval on September twelfth, and they had five um. Conditions, one of those was, we just talked about the safe pedestrian access uh provided from Arbor Chase Road and from Zee Road. And that such safe pedestrians shall be placed in the plans um in in consultation with the applicant and um Stacy, who can who can speak just maybe a little bit better than I. Um, we all felt that there really is no safe way to access um the site from Zee directly, I mean, they they would have to cross over. On the exiting drive-through, so I think we've we've touched on that and um it just really isn't, um, I think that. What's proposed is the safest way for a pedestrian to enter, enter the site. Um, we did a thorough review, we really um didn't have, they they addressed most of our comments after our first review. Um, the outstanding items I had were to verify the landscape plan and plan schedule coincide with each other, um specifically the woodland replacement requirements. Um, that the planning commission consider the alternative locations for the foundation plantings that we've already discussed. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have on my.
Questions for Laura.
Do you have a question about the, you said pedestrian access access directly from Zee is not possible safely? And I and I get that because of the layout, um, do you agree with the statement that was made that the road commission would have to approve? Pedestrian striping across that exit-only area?
I think Stacy can address that, um, I don't, I I I don't know why we couldn't ask for it, I it but it's in the road, the right of way, we, you know. We would, if it's under their jurisdiction, they would have the final.
And that's a public road, um.
I believe it, we need real commission permits, it is.
So the question to ask that the that exit only, um, where it meets the sidewalk be raised to the sidewalk level?
That's a question for Stacy, I I mean, as far as grading that grading. Uh, Tom and Angela will have to speak to that.
The question was about raising the the exit only where it intersects the sidewalk up to the sidewalk level.
So it's like a.
Why wouldn't you just wrap the sidewalk down to that?
Well, because, I mean, you could do it that way, but we're talking.
Red dots.
I'm sorry, with, you know, the with the.
You have to put in, even when you're crossing a driveway, right, you have to put in the dot things, or you don't have to put those in when you're crossing a driveway.
No, so the code indicates that the ADA technical warning surfaces. Are not required at driveway crossings for the reason of um it. Tends to be misinterpreted or it has the ability to be misinterpreted um for intersections or for larger crossings.
So what I was, what I was getting at though is that this is another example of traffic calming measures where you force it.
Like a speed bump.
It basically is, you're bringing the cars up to the sidewalk level so that pedestrians don't even have to go down and back up, right? That's not really the big issue here, it's the cars must slow down for this, for this bump that they're gonna go over. And since that's the access that you have to get.
Yeah.
Into the building from Zee, which Zee is arguably the busier road. Another way to. Calm traffic.
And and it alerts the drivers that there's pedestrians um potentially right there, right?
Any other questions for Laura's? O H M, who do we have tonight?
We recommended approval of this project as well in our letter from November first, we had two minor comments remaining. One of them to provide an update on the easement discussions for the proposed water uh service. Connection, which possibly the applicant could address tonight, and then also to relocate a tree from on top of the proposed water service. Both of which I think can still be worked out in detailed engineering moving forward. And then as a reminder, we did previously review the traffic impact assessment. Um, with the conditional use, we had two minor comments with that, that the applicant has since addressed with the submittal tonight. And then the road commission has also approved their traffic assessment with no other comments. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have, um, I know that there was a few mentioned just now that you might need some additional input on. Um, but I don't recall specifically which ones.
Yeah, I think it was the issue of the crossings and uh road permission approval to stripe versus have. Uh, has anyone done sort of the raised speed bumps to slow traffic where there's a sidewalk crossing?
Or a raised sidewalk level crossing.
Right, as opposed to just striping?
Okay, I believe that the internal Arbor Chase roads are actually private, I don't know if that goes as far out to Zeeb as. Private or public, I would have to look that up, but I do believe their internal is private, I know that the road commission is reviewing. And I think it's more so from the traffic stance that that will influence the traffic along Zeeb. And other nearby areas that they're just making sure that this development doesn't impact anything more significant, and it doesn't. Um, we typically have seen uh at least a change in material for a cross, a crosswalk through an entrance drive. Um, so like, most of the time the parking lot is asphalt, so we'll see the crosswalk as concrete and that. Gives enough um visual for drivers to see that there is a crosswalk coming up, I don't think that road commission would need to. Review or approve striping. Um, in the crossings, I think that's something that could definitely be implemented, and then I'm not used to seeing, excuse me, any. Traffic calming measures of a raised sidewalk crossing, that's something that you could probably still. Implement, but I'm just not used to seeing it in the township, typically it's just that change in material does the trick.
And um, okay, are there typically stop signs placed before crosswalks like that or no?
Yes, that will help the drivers stop at the sign and then see the crosswalk in front of them.
I like that.
I went to that statement though, because I see drivers blow through stop signs all the time, they don't stop at the sign, they go right up until where they want to stop, so I just really disagree with that statement, that the stop signs will. Enforce uh drivers to stop.
But it also, in addition to saving.
So yeah, I don't, I just feel like I don't see drivers at CIO anyway. Respect these sorts of markings.
So you would prefer to see the raised.
I very much would, that's a, that is a physical thing that they absolutely have to. At least acknowledge as they cross over it.
Although if there is an injury and there's a stop sign and somebody blows through it, there are more consequences, I would imagine, or something like that.
I would just rather them not be injured in the first place.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right.
That happens anyway.
Oh, so has Norwalk France ever done any um raised sidewalks across driveways that you can discuss?
We have, um, my immediate concern with doing that with this specific site would be the location of. The sidewalk to Arbor Chase Drive. Uh, so it's very close, so to make up that grade difference in pavement, typically you would like to see a one to four percent.
Right, it's a.
Yeah, so.
It's almost like a step, because you have a curb.
Yeah, so you're you're kind of dictated what your um elevations are gonna be based on being so close to proximity to Arbor Chase Drive.
So you're, what you're saying is the geometry of it, i- if if you had a lawn extension or landscaping extension. Then you'd have space to be able to deal with the change in.
Yeah, so typically when we would do like a a crossing like this, we're bringing bringing the pavement elevation up to the sidewalk crossing, we would do it over twenty feet. Um, to keep things within the acceptable, um. Yeah, basically you have one to four percent was what you're allowed on in parking lots. Um, sometimes you can go a little bit more or less, but it would, it would be a very sharp bump if that were the case to make up, you know, a six-inch drop. In this instance.
What about a change in material?
I don't see any issue with that. We could definitely do like concrete across the sidewalks. The site is asphalt, and then Arbor Chase is also asphalt, so it would make a very nice distinction of that.
It also appears that the pedestrian sidewalk goes right through some landscaping. Is there room to adjust where that landscaping goes?
I thought it was up against the edge of it, but I couldn't quite tell.
Well, the sidewalk has to go through to connect to the crossing? If you look at the landscape.
That's where I'm looking.
Yeah, there are a bunch of circles that go across.
So. I thought the sidewalk was right out by the curb.
It is, but you have to get through that, the shrubs to cross the driveway.
Well, if we can't physically fit a raised crossing in there, and, but we could use a concrete material with striping, with a stop sign?
I think that would increase the safety of it.
John, just trying to look out for what the, some of the board members were. Yeah. Nothing comes to me right now, I'm just trying to focus on this. You know, the driving hour, sidewalk and pedestrian safety and. The sidewalk continues on to the west towards Meyer?
Yes.
Where are the bike racks? Is that what the circles are? No. I don't know what these dots are.
I'm not sure where the, there's supposed to be three.
Yeah, it's supposed to be three, like. Hoops, right, racks, those two guys, there's two lines right there.
May.
Please.
It's at the northeast corner of the building, inside the landscape island. We have a pad there for the bicycle parking.
Inside the landscape island?
Yeah, right up north of the dining patio in that landscape island.
Oh, okay, that's what those. They look like lines, but.
That's where the pad was set, MMU detail is provided on the architectural sheet 1.2 at the bottom left.
So is that landscape island then all paved or mulched?
So it'd be just a pad for the bike parking adjacent to the sidewalk.
A pad meaning concrete?
Yeah, a concrete pad, so they can park their bikes on it. But there's still a tree and other landscaping that's still in the island, that will still fit, like, bike parking.
Sorry, is there something to lock the bikes to?
There are hoops.
The sheet, A1.2 on the bottom left, it's a hoop for the bike there.
What, bottom right, what's, she, what is it?
Bottom left, A1.2.
So it's sheet 18.32. So is there, there we have the, you have side details, so. Which ones tell you that you, you know, entrance only, is there? That's a common sign with two people.
Yes. No, that'd be sheet C3, it was noted on. Yeah.
Focus, there's no B.
No, I don't, it'd be your typical MMUTCD sign details.
Just a question, it, it just seems odd that, you know, you have a tree, I don't know the branching structure of the tree, but you've got to be right underneath the tree to lock up your bike, and I don't, I just. Doesn't seem very functional right there. That's my concern.
I believe the trees do not get very large in developments such as this. However, were to continue to grow to the maximum possible growth, which is what's indicated on the plans, then additional.
I'm just thinking of headroom underneath a branch. I mean, when it's little.
Six feet from bottom of the branches to, to grade minimum.
I just, I guess I've not seen bike parking arranged like that. And I guess then the other thing was, the elevations show an awful lot of writing on the building, and I know you haven't submitted for a sign. A permit, but it, how is the writing viewed from a signage standpoint? Oh, right, it is considered a sign. So then the elevation as shown really wouldn't be, would not be. And we, I've had special applause for your performance. Yeah, and then the other thing, the screening of the, can you explain the screening of the HVAC equipment? Because it looks like there's something shown above the parapet and in the, in all the elevations actually, and just, because that's required, but you're not, you're, all HVAC is supposed to be screened. I'm not quite sure how you're accomplishing that.
Ann, could you speak to that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, now, I know our architect would be better able to speak to this, but we haven't had an issue with our RTU being seen outside of the parapet, so. I would have to confirm with them, I'm trying to pull up another image as an example.
It, because it, yeah, and I'm looking at the roof, oh boy, and I gotta find a roof plan. It just, it seemed like, you know, it's a pretty skinny building, and sometimes when, you know, rooftop units can be taller than the parapet if they're in the center of the building, but I don't know, this is a pretty skinny building, and that, that, the dash line is pretty high above the parapet.
Yeah, I do see that as well. We would be happy to look into some sort of screening around the RTUs to ensure that they're not visible from the street.
And, yeah, either screen them or ensure with a sightline that they're not visible from the sidewalk, which I, which may be the case.
Is there a distance out away?
No, they would show, they would show advertised person and the site and what you would see on the elevation, so.
From the sidewalk.
It depends on the grade of the sidewalk in the buildings, there is a low, average height per se, but if they can demonstrate that they aren't seen, then additional screening wouldn't be necessary.
Okay.
Would you automatically look into that, or would you have to be directed? Oh, the engineer.
They would have to, they would have to show, illustrate.
And they can, as part of the detail engineering.
You got one.
Okay.
I can bring my computer.
I just lost my.
Yeah, because I waited until you did that, of course.
Sorry.
And then I asked.
Let's see, what, what page is the, yeah, there it is. So I'm seeing the bike racks, okay, here.
I, oh, I'm not seeing that circle, a tree. That's where I was.
Like, I have a full-size set of frames.
Because I'm just thinking of the street trees downtown, and there isn't that much clearance.
Exactly.
Well.
The bike hoops aren't generally under the trees, they're clear in between the trees.
Like the deciduous trees? Just thinking of deciduous trees on May, and deciduous trees on.
But they don't put bike hoops underneath them.
Doesn't the interior landscape island require a minimum size? It's perhaps, so by putting those bike hoops in there, is that, you know, not qualifying as an interior landscape island?
No. I don't know where else you put them.
If I may offer a suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead.
If, if that's a concern, we could find another place for the bikes. Potentially there'd be a spot up by the exit-only drive, doing a branch off the sidewalk there, or there could be something maybe a little bit even, maybe even behind the building. I'm sure there's a spot we could find that's not so close to a tree.
As close to the entrance, the better. It's where pedestrians want to park.
Having it closer to it isn't a bad spot, because you can keep your eye on your bike while you're.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you move them closer to the building and make them parallel? Is there enough room there to do that?
Not quite sure what you mean. That's why I thought they were originally, was parallel with the building.
Yeah, I was looking, but I think those are signs.
Is that what that was on our side?
I'm sure.
I thought there were bike hoops.
Are they here or those signs?
Peninsula, the sticks out there where the trees, those two horizontal and vertical, one vertical.
Oh, I get it. So these are signs, those aren't the bike things. That's where he's got it, they don't have them shown exactly on the.
Okay, so those are the ones that are up towards the, okay.
Well, actually, they're the, they're on, this is the pad right here. Right here is the pad, and the bike hoops are on that pad, so as well.
Okay.
Sorry, I was thinking the signs or the bike hoops, trying to figure that one out, okay. We should show those then. You know, just the location of the hoops on the plan, that would be helpful. Okay.
I'm, you're satisfied, I didn't really see where you were pointing. No, you're.
Okay, there's a five-by-five pad that is off the sidewalk next to that parking lot, next to the island, and the hoops are on that, they're not, you know, out by the curves. Yeah, for some reason that wasn't.
It was a strange spot, underneath a tree like that.
So where are we?
Yeah, commissioners' thoughts? I guess the only other thing, I'd really like to see some sort of, you know, in lieu of the landscape foundation planting, you know, on that patio fence, it's really easy to get, you know, some, you know, you can hang on the fence and put additional flowers, seasonal things, it would just break up, because that's like your main, you know, everything else isn't too bad. You have the entry that's kind of harsh, but, and that faces Zeeb too.
More fun with elevation.
And the other one that's kind of rough is, you know, the actual entry, but there's no room for anything there.
Is that a possibility?
We'd have to speak with PSP Plaza Street Partners about that, to see if that is allowable for their brand standards. And if it is, then I don't see any issue with joining that.
Yeah, and then I, I would also like to see the, you know, getting rid of the turf grass, because I think if you did some native planting in the back, I mean, that would really break up, you know, you have an ocean of parking on both sides of that, and that would, the trees certainly help, but that would kind of complete that and make it kind of a nicer, rather than having the turf grass back there.
So that's where the iPad users are running, you know, they're taking orders, and I guess they can walk on the pavement.
That's true, they're gonna be on the lawns, there may be a use to that lawn space.
It might be. Stretching that.
Any other thoughts, folks?
My, my big concerns are really the buffering from the residential, and it looks like you're meeting the landscape code, it's a 50-foot wide buffer. The same with the lightings, it was meeting the lighting ordinance, so. I would just say in the future, if there's any complaints from the residences, I hope you're open to like, if they want some type of opaque fence in the back, you know, if there's headlights that are still shining through the, you know, the pine trees or something, that we could, you know, get something separate, like a fence permit or even a lower wattage bulb, even though it's meeting right now, but if there's a lot of glare or something, if you use a shield, but I think that'll probably happen after it's constructed, if there's, you know, concerns from the residences, that you'd be open to, you know, rectifying any type of issue if there is glare from the headlights entering that site. So that's, that was really my, my big concern, with the residences that are already located there.
Yeah, and I think the provision, so you, you could do recycling also, I think that's.
It would have been more comforting to have heard it was a policy of slim check-in that they would, would be into recycling as much as they could, but I didn't hear that. So even just having a recycling bin, they might just use it as a separate trash bin. Unless we heard a commitment that you opened it. You're.
They, they aren't the operator either.
You know, but they know the policy.
This is all about dollars, which is why we're here. Here to think about things other than dollars. I get that we're close to making a motion.
Did you have some comments?
Well, sure, my final comments are the same that you've heard over and over again. I think that drive-throughs are terrible for the environment, they are terrible for pedestrians, they are terrible for walkability, and they are terrible for CYO township. I really would urge this planning commission to stop approving drive-throughs so that we can start building better.
Is that anywhere, anywhere, Jeff? Is that like, what about right next to a freeway? Or on Zeeb Road, which connects to a freeway? I, I, I appreciate your, your perspective, I really do. But is there, do you envision an area in CYO township where a drive-through might be an appropriate use associated with a restaurant? Either, I regard this as like fast casual rather than fast food, because just based on looking at it for the Curtis commercial deal, Panera. And, but it's also on Zeeb Road, close to a freeway, so, and, and, and I get, we gotta get, and I appreciate that there's residential right next to it, which gives, which is different than the McDonald's right, right off the exit ramp. Because you have not residential there, so I'm appreciative of that. But are you saying that you don't want a drive-through ever?
Yes, I think so. But certainly in an area like this, where we're, it's basically our downtown, that's, seems to be the busiest spot in CYO, there's pretty dense housing there as well. I really feel like the Zeeb and Jackson intersection.
I really feel like the Ziv and, and Jackson intersection really has a lot of potential to be a more urbanized area, but you're not going to get there with giant parking lots and drive-throughs. It's gotta be, it's gotta be a, a, a commitment to. I, I'll go back to the Panera, our Panera gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, but.
Kurt.
He was, he lost his client because we had approved a drive-through over there in Meyer, and he felt probably right. The only way that he can get another patron is to have, or tenant, is to have a drive-through. And this is going to be a continuous cycle. The more drive-throughs we approve, the less the sit-down restaurants are going to be able to compete, and we're just only going to have drive-through restaurants. It's just going to be really hard for any sort of sit-down restaurants to be getting established.
But how is a drive-through that different than a drive-to? People drive to the session. People drive to Carlisle. People drive to Sam Hill. People drive to restaurants that don't have drive-throughs, and then still, you, you drive, I mean, until we have, until we have buildings next to each other where you can walk from this building to that building to that building and that building, it, it seems like that's, there's clusters of little areas that people drive to. You drive to the Panera, the Starbucks, and the haircut. You drive over here for something. I mean, I appreciate your concern, but how do we get there, given the layout of this Meyer complex and the outbuildings?
Sure. Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not even at the point of saying that we shouldn't be having places to drive-through, that's right, excuse me, to drive-to. I, I think that that's pretty much inevitable based on the way that the township is built right now. But with a drive-through, it is a very car-centric service, right? It is built around servicing people in cars. It's not built around servicing people that are coming together and.
But, and how, but how do we accommodate people who might be seniors and not as ambulatory? They don't, they don't, they, they drive in from north of ninety-four. They, they, you know, they want to, and they want to get some food and take it to go. How, how do you accommodate those people? And drive-throughs do accommodate Scioto Township residents. So we are accommodating, you know, there's, there's more to getting around than walking, although I appreciate your interest in walkability and your, and, you know, buses and, 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 and bikes, but a lot of people, older people, uh, do drive, drive to and drive through and pick things up.
Sure. Well, there's two, two things that I would like to say about that. Uh, one is that they can have, you can have a drive-up and carry it out. Let's have a curbside delivery. There are plenty of places that, that, that you don't have to have a drive-through in order to get curbside, curb-side delivery for.
Like an auto car hop.
Those people that don't want to get out of their cars, I guess. But also going to elderly drivers, especially whenever you get very elderly, very much late in, in life.
No, I'm talking like Bob Hi.
Okay, sure, but Bob's fine at getting out of this car. I, I, I want to call out any particular age group, but we're talking close to centenarians.
I was only kidding about.
Sure, but I'm just saying that there are stories of, of elderly people getting into accidents and plenty of, of anecdotes of people saying, oh, you know, grandpa shouldn't be driving, and he's going to get angry if you take away his keys. It's because they have no other option to get to where they need to go. They have no other option to get about and do the things they need to do to go buy food, to go grocery shopping, to go run errands. The only option we've given these people is to get in a car and drive five miles to get somewhere. And these drive-throughs are going to encourage more of the single-family home sprawling development because we're now accommodating people in cars even more than we were before.
Yeah, Commissioner Hyde.
I appreciate what you're saying, Jeff. I, I do want to point out that when we had the open house on this, public hearing on this, I was listening for whether the residents that were right there, right next door, were going to be for or against, and pretty much it was silent. I mean, I didn't hear the residents.
I didn't hear anybody from there here at all.
Right. So to me, that speaks volumes. I don't think that it's going to be something that they are, are, are not going to use either. I think that they will walk to these. And we have to make sure that they can walk in safely, and I think they might even bike to it, although carrying a, a bag of hot food home on a bike, I guess you have baskets, I don't, but people do. So they could bike to, but for the most part, I think we're hearing that people are going to drive in and, and sit down and actually go out on the patio, or they're going to drive there, and they're going to pick up and they're going to go home, or they're going to drive there, and they're going to have ordered ahead of time, and they're going to pick up and go home. So, or go on their way on the, on the freeway. I mean, it is very close to the freeway, and it's actually, I don't like the McDonald's location because people get off the freeway and then they practically cut across traffic to get into that parking lot, and they come flying out of that parking lot and breathe through traffic. So it's, that's a bad situation. This is far enough away that I think that cars can get in and out of the parking lot more safely than at McDonald's. I, I find that they've accommodated most of what our concerns were, and boy, they packed this into a really narrow lot and managed to make it flow. I was kind of hoping that there would be a physical barrier between the entrance and the exit, so the cars would have to go only one direction around. But the way they laid out the peninsula and, and the two peninsula and the island and the signage, I think that for the most part, it, people are going to go in the right direction. And, and the S P's would be safe. The first one.
It's pretty visible where you go to.
Yeah.
But back to your point, I think, I think that needs to be a very important part of the J-Rod discussion about if, if there are more where, you know, once the zone and, you know, looking at the, the very specifics of it or saying, we've got enough. And because it's not, you know, it's in this area, but it's also, you know, what happens at Baker? And, you know, as you think, you know, getting there, how do you get there? And we're talking, you know, when you're talking about planning, you're talking twenty years. And, you know, so if you're right, if you continue to do this incremental, yes, 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 we'll never get there. But at what point do you say, stop, it can only be here, or you've got enough?
That's the discussion that you're trying to get going.
Yeah.
On the Jackson Road Boulevard. Rezoning.
Yeah, and to your point, where are the most likely places where you can create, you know, of, of the walkability piece or the multiple? So I think that's, because that's going to be where people, especially younger people, want to live. So I think that's really important to, you know, make sure we have a diversity of people in the township, because right now it is.
And much more isolated.
Okay, yeah. Okay, going back to this other, it seems like they've resolved most of the concerns.
I, I have a motion, and I have a motion with various conditions that at least I'll put on the table to get the discussions going.
Okay.
And that is regarding site plan number twenty-three oh one eight Slim Chickens. I move that based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that site plan number two-three oh one eight Slim Chicken meets the required standards and findings for site plan approval pursuant to section thirty-six dash one eighty of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval. This site plan of recommendation or approval is granted with the following conditions. One, that the concerns noted in the township planner's review dated eleven six twenty-three, specifically page seven, be addressed. Two, that the concerns noted in the township engineer's review dated ten twenty-three, twenty-three, pages one and two, be addressed. That the applicant shall install painted crosswalks and signage at all entrances and exits. Four, that the applicant shall re-recycle to the extent possible and contract with a for recycling services with a recycler hauler. Five, the applicant shall consider planting native plants instead of turf, turf grass to the extent possible. That would be my motion. If some of that gets struck or amended to, I'm not going to, you know, but I, that's, I want to get that out there based on kind of what we spoke about.
Are there any amendments?
Absolutely.
You, could you read what you said about the entrances and exits?
Yeah, applicant shall install painted crosswalks and signage at all entrances and exits, and so.
I'd like to suggest that you have it be concrete material crossings.
And, and, and could I add a six or, 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 or exits and that the crosswalks shall be concrete?
And the. Striped concrete, so that they would stripe it.
And be a striped concrete? Okay. And the crosswalk shall be concrete.
You say signage.
Stop signs?
Yes, but you can't have a stop sign at an entrance. You said entrances and exits.
Entrances and exits. I, 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 you know, install painted crosswalks and appropriate signage.
And that would be understood to be a stop sign on the exits.
I, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I would, I don't know if we'd defer to OHM on that, or if we'd defer to Carlisle Wardman.
How to word that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I want to say appropriate signage.
Chris said appropriate signage with the. You got a stop sign on the way out?
Yeah, I mean, we would look in to make sure, make sure that traffic signage was.
So you can add to something.
Okay, I got it.
Another.
That would be.
Chris had one with the being open to additional light shielding if necessary. Joining the, on the, which is, is it the west side?
It'd be the west and the south. Anything adjacent to residential.
Adjacent to residential. Being. Now, that's not a hard requirement at this time.
And no, neither is the considered native planting versus turf grass as much as possible. Yeah.
So are we adding, being open to?
Or do we have a sign, or do we have a light ordinance that already covers that?
Well, we do. There's, there's the, it's not the parking lot lighting, it's the, if the buffer is dense enough to block headlights.
It's the headlight.
Yeah, it's the headlights.
It was both. I was looking at both. It was the headlights and if there are issues with the parking lot lighting, and was it any type of glare or if they could soften it with either screening it or, you know, shields, you can put shields on them to block from the residents, or a lower wattage bulb, even though it, it is meeting. I looked at it then. So it is meeting the lighting code, the illumination. If there are complaints, they'd be open to it.
Well, wouldn't that be a nuisance?
If there are complaints, we'd have to deal with it at that time. So I don't know that, if they meet the requirement, I don't know that we'd need an additional condition at this time.
Okay. I know you brought.
So that would be, that would be a complaint.
It would, it would be, yes, it would be a complaint at a future time when it's developed, when it's built. Can't set them to a standard. You don't, they say they're going to meet.
Yeah.
All right, is there a second? Okay. Supported by Commissioner Hyde. Further discussion. We'll call vote, please. Commissioner Chan.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Human.
No.
Commissioner Riser.
Yes.
Commissioner Chan, yes, and Commissioner Callerson.
Yes.
Okay. One-one, if you need to carry.
Thank you very much. And just, this is a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, and so it will then be forwarded there and
it will go after these minutes.
It's our approval.
So these minutes probably won't be approved till December eleventh, and the board won't meet again till Chan.
I think we have December meetings.
Right, but we, you won't approve these till December, December eleventh. So we do not have a November twenty-seventh meeting. We have no agenda items.
Okay.
So we will not have this on the meeting following our planning commission meetings. What I'm saying, the minutes won't be, these minutes won't be approved till December eleventh. The board meets on the twelfth. There is no second meeting in December because it would be Christmas. So the next meeting that this could be heard at would be Chan.
Although we could probably.
Wow, this is special.
Can we go from eleven to twelve, or is that not enough time?
Oh, I would prefer not to. We did that.
Okay.
It's difficult to get an agenda item prepared when the minutes of the planning commission meeting are approved. That's a requirement. Unless you meet on November twenty-seventh to approve.
Approved minutes. Well, then just let us know if that is an issue. And there might be a, a way administratively to work that out. Because that is a long time. That's two months. Okay. All right, we'll move on, and thank you. Thank you. All right, we have no unfinished business, so we'll go to reports. Oh, OHM, we'll let you go first.
We actually have nothing to report tonight.
Carlisle Wardman?
We have not had any pre-development meetings.
All right, and Commissioner Riser, you sent in a board of trustees report.
I did, and it'll be added to the packet. If anyone could email or call me, and I'll, I'll send it to them. But it, bullet point, I have extra copies if someone didn't have the chance to look at it. But otherwise, check your email, your Scioto Township email. Sent one to Pam Lloyd. She has it. She sometimes posts things that are news there. I mean, she often does.
Um, zoning board of appeals, we haven't met again since our last meeting, and we, we don't have any items this month. The DDA met today. I couldn't. Rack, that is, did you go to any of their meetings?
I've been to one, and I haven't had one since the last time.
Okay. Land Preservation Commission? John?
Nothing to report out, nothing to report out. We ranked a few, yes, I say yesterday, last Thursday, but couple of applications, but one of which we're going to continue getting a, like a survey and an appraisal on.
Okay, PPP?
Uh, we did everything on the number eight, and Barry Locke gave a nice presentation of the DD Marshall. Looking at trying to get interest and egress easements out there, so that's something that'll be ongoing.
Look forward to seeing it.
Um, Hearn River Watershed Council?
Well, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting here. I did want to point out something that Huron River Watershed Council is. Making, no, on their website, they talk about the pay bills that are up.
Oh.
Coming, well, I should say, they are up yet, they're working their way through. They, they haven't been voted on yet.
I don't think they were, they actually closed, they're, they're not meeting anymore, so what they passed. Um. Last week.
Did they pass?
That was it. I don't think they, the, the, the pay bills, they passed.
Others.
Yeah.
So they think they're gonna come up again in January, start over again, but, um. On the watershed council, they do list all the bills that were up and we'd like. Uh, people to contact their congresspeople to give their opinions, you know, obviously, the watershed council wants to point out that. There are three superfund sites on, in the Huron River watershed. There are. Six hundred and ninety-eight Eagle environmental contaminated sites and there are twelve hundred and thirty-five leaking underground storage tanks.
Geez.
And they would like.
Wow.
They, they are doing as much advocacy as they can and they would like any of. The residents that are a part of the watershed to also voice their opinion.
And they have some information on their website.
Huron is H R W C dot org and you can go on there and you can find, uh, all the information.
All right. Um, all right, Environmental Sustainability Task Force. We had our sustainability fair. Um, and actually, we got some good.
Crazy, it was. It was crazy crap.
Crazy crap.
It was, it was, it was, it was well attended, I thought, or maybe you don't think so compared to the thousands at the store or the, with the fire department.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, it's, it's environmental sustainability too. It's not free candy.
It was.
I thought it was well attended.
Yeah, I think we got some good, the feedback from people that were there were that the quality of the conversations were really good. Uh, they wanted to continue to do, um, collaborate with us some things, um, and, um. Yeah, so I think that general feedback was great. I think there's some feedback around signage, location, so forth, that, um, were in January, the, um. E S T F is gonna kind of, you know, think about, um, there are some suggestions of maybe even doing it, there's an E V. What's that called? National E V Week or something like that and actually do it, you know, at buyer. Um, and, you know, going out to getting a whole range of people, um, and making it more visible. So we'll talk about different, um, strategies for that. Um, then I wanted to talk about, um. Uh, a couple of, um, kind of strategies moving forward, um, discussing about, um, possibly there, it doesn't cost anything, the, um. There's, uh, opportunity for the township to have a climate core, uh, apply for, to be a host site for the climate core, which would give us a full-time person to work on. You know, uh, P P P, L P C, um, sustainability things, um, and, um. There's also the Michigan, uh, Green Communities, uh, group that I think, uh, Ann Arbor's a part of that. And it, it doesn't cost anything, but it gives you some free technical assistance. It's also one of the checkboxes for some of the Eagle grants. That are coming up. It would give us, uh, a boost in applying for a climate core person. Um, and, uh, so some opportunities for, um, kind of supporting some of those efforts. Um, it does look like, uh, we're trying to schedule a, um, a, a working session with the B O T to go over the. That action plan. I do have two printed copies. Actually, I should put one out front. So, so there's some, um, printed ones I, I, I meant to do that. Um. Then I wanted to talk to folks if, um, December eleventh, it doesn't look like we have, we might have something, but it doesn't look like we have a lot of projects coming our way. And, um, it, I know there's been a lot of discussion about, um, the community wastewater facilities. You know, in, in different standards and who approves what and, um. Outlining our, uh, looking at our ordinance because of some of the state standards now, um, et, et cetera, et cetera. So, um. Ted Erickson, who designs these things, is going to come. There's, I don't know who it's gonna be yet, but the environmental health. But Washington County Environmental Health said that they would have someone, I mean, these would be virtual presentations on.
These private resources during our meeting?
Yeah, during our meeting on the eleventh, it would be a presentation to kind of get it, an understanding of. What the different types are, what the volumes are that go to the state permitting versus county permitting. What's the role of our ordinance in it? Um, and part of this came up too because I attended a pre-op meeting for many hands and one of the things they're. Proposing is a deviation from our two hundred foot setback. Um, and they don't have, they're just doing a, they're doing a combined, um, regular septic field. But it is underneath, it's, it's covered in our ordinance as the same as a. Us a, like, uh, the heritage wood system, it's processing. So there is any differentiation between those two different types of systems in our ordinance. So it's, it is.
Community system is a community system, whether it's the plant or it's a wastewater.
Or just a field.
Yeah.
A bunch of neighbors, a bunch of neighbors getting together.
Right, right. So I thought it would be good to get, kind of see if we could have a presentation that. Straight, uh, at least explain that so we could all understand it. Um, I could invite, you know, board of trustees or whatever. I also reached out to the Huron River Watershed Council to see if they could have a person be a part of that discussion. I haven't heard back from them yet. Um, so it was, at least I didn't wanna have just the person that designs it. I wanted to have, you know.
So what else do we have on this December eleventh?
Nothing, uh, right now.
Okay, because it's also a December during the holidays that if we don't need to meet, we could do that in January, maybe.
We, although it would be good to approve minutes. We should have one in there.
Yeah, because we won't be meeting in November.
Besides, what do you have better to do on a Monday night?
Okay.
Before Tuesday.
Let's see, um, I, I don't quite know where appointments stand yet. Um, we're gonna be. Um, Jeff won't be continuing, um, to have another appointment, um. Although I think by, you're, you're roped in until they make an appointment, I think.
Is that true? It says that I, my position expired, what, twenty-four?
On the twenty-fourth of November. I think they're trying to do that. I think they're, I don't know. I have to.
Joyce, I spoke to Joyce and Mariah and, and the, the word from Mariah, I think, is that one of the township attorneys, to like. People should remain on the committees until further notice and hopefully that notice will be, um, at the next November meeting.
Okay.
Have you, have you got, it, it should be solved quickly. Have you, have you had much interest?
Yeah, there's been a group of.
We've been putting a word out.
Yeah, there've been, I don't know, five or so, um, applications that have tried to, um.
Jeff, I'll miss you. I didn't realize until tonight that it was, that you weren't going to continue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and I'm a man of integrity, so if I need to stay, if that's the way that it's supposed to be done, I will stay until.
I think they're trying to make the appointments.
I won't be, we aren't meeting on November twenty-fourth anyways, but that wasn't until it was made up.
Yeah.
So maybe the, the Trump could be your last meeting, a huge send-off.
I don't need a huge send-off. Okay.
Anyway.
All right, well then, uh, I guess you'll let me know before the December eleventh meeting if I need to be here.
Yeah, and I think they're trying to make those appointments happen. And they're also the other thing, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so there has to be a B O T appointment. Um, and what they're also doing is they're looking at, um, they're supposed to be, um. Not everyone is supposed to be up at the same time, so they're, they're gonna stagger those appointments, so it'll be the appointments, but also stagger terms, so.
There might be an ordinance change, there might be an ordinance change concomitant with the appointments that staggers them, so some people have a one-year, two-year, three-year, or a, you know, so.
Yeah, um, and there are continuing to be, um, discussions with SEMCOG and Watts about transportation planning. And the, there's still discussions going on with the Goodrich Theater piece about uses and so forth. That hasn't come to the B O T yet.
Uh, uh, on a planning, another planning matters, today, SiO, uh, Ridge and Upland Drive opened back up after the pathway, so that's open. Uh, just in the nick of time because tomorrow is another day that, uh, the Liberty Bridge is gonna be closed while they pour the. The, the, the side walls, they've got the deck already, but now they're working on the sidewalls, so. That's closer to being completed. And, um, you know, I was talking to, to Matt Parks and I, like. Who should I, we, someone reach out to? Like, how would we get a safe pathway across SiO? Church and hooking up with the library in the Ice Cube down there, uh, you know, do, do we send an email, do I send an email to Matt? Is that a Watts thing? Is that a SEMCOG thing? Is that a?
That's a road.
Is a road commission, like, who do you, like, how do you, how do you get people safely across that road? Do you do it right at Upland? Do you do it somewhere in the middle where it's safe and they have a chance, like to play the Frogger game? Uh, or do you put it down towards Oak Valley? Or do you leave it up to the road commission and the transportation experts to decide where to put that thing? But who, you know, any suggestions on that? And maybe that's a rack thing, or maybe it's a pathway thing, maybe, you know, I don't know.
That's actually crossing out of the township.
No, I know, no, I, 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 I agree, but there's, but there's Kensington Woods down there, but it's a lot of, but a lot of.
Where I was going is that might be a county commission.
You're right, and maybe it's work with Lodi, I, or, you know, and it's Pittsfield right there too.
Is it?
I guess it's near the.
No, it's, it's Pittsfield. The library and heber in Pittsfield. She planned those.
I, I think you would, you know, the conversation probably has to start with the road commission. You're crossing the county road. Um, but they, I'm sure, have an idea of where they feel, um, it would, they would like it to be.
Right, I would, I would wanna put it where I want it. I'd wanna put it where the experts say it should go.
Who, who asks the road commission?
Stacy and I can talk about that tomorrow.
All right, and, um. Our services, you guys have the.
We have, we don't have any input, but I think the voters had input. What was the outcome?
By two to one.
Do you know if this is coming back then? Is this gonna come back for about the next year or two, or is it?
Well, it depends. I don't know. I don't know. I don't, I can't speak for the township. It's, it's the board of trustees that will be deciding.
So just so you know, there's still a one point three five millage that's in place for another year.
Yeah.
And then the question becomes, here's, here's what the, the question becomes, what do you do when the millage runs out? What do you do when the bus millage runs out? What do you do when you're considering a road millage? You know, how do you, how do you fund police? Do you put four millages up there and you, you make them smile and you, you see what passes? Or is that, you know, that's a, that's a.
It's a tough call.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why they pay you the big bucks, John. Huge bucks.
Okay, and, uh, Commissioner Moore is a young guy. So, um, we'll move on to minutes.
I have moved their approval.
You wanna do both of them, both the, um, meeting minutes of the twenty-third and the twenty-sixth? I didn't see anything.
I'd be willing to do that.
Any other comments? All in favor of approving both the ten twenty-three and the ten twenty-six minutes?
I.
Any opposed? They are approved as posted. Then I would, um, just in case this is the last meeting that the Commissioner even, um, since I just wanted to. I, you know, I wanna say thank you for your perspective. I think you've given us certainly, um, a, a lot to think about as far as the multi-modal. Pedestrians and drive-throughs and all that thing. And I don't think anybody here takes that lightly at all.
No, I really appreciate your commitment to, uh, biking, to, uh, to pedestrians. I thought about you when I was listening to NPR today and they were talking about how narrower roads going from to nine-foot. Widths instead of twelve-foot are actually safer for pedestrians. And so I, I'm thinking, how do we get the road commission to narrow our roads and put bike lanes or just like. How, 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 how do we bring the cars closer together and, and narrower so that they slow it down? Maybe on Park Road, we can do that? So that's a conversation worth, worth having is like, what traffic calming measures can we think about as a planning commission? And I, you know, like I say, you've brought that to us.
And we do get to her.
Thanks. And you know what? If I gotta be on the eleventh, I'll be up. We look forward to seeing you on the other side of the table then.
Okay, we do have a hand raised. Does anyone have any?
No objection from.
No objections, all right.
Rob Pattinson?
Cool. Pattinson, SiO Township, Kim Moore is, um, um, never mind. Anyway, um. Thank you all for considering Commissioner Moore's comments tonight. I think that was important that you all took that in and reacted so positively to it. Uh, Commissioner Hubens, um, legacy on this midi is gonna be pointing out and highlighting. How critical it is for SiO to get more planning in our future and less reactionary, just dealing with each application as it comes through. We really do need to get some planning in place. Um, on that note, the P U D, public benefit. Um, aspect of, um, getting a policy in place for that is coming up on December second, I believe. Um, I would hope that you would all begin thinking about how we can get that policy in place. That's a combined meeting with you guys and the D D A and the board of trustees. And let's try and get something going so we, you're fair and transparent, P U D, public benefit. And just a public benefit policy in general in place. Um, one thing you didn't talk about tonight was E V chargers for the, um, the parking lot. And another thing is in terms of traffic calming, uh, one huge traffic calming measure would have been a traffic light at Arbor Point and. And that would allow people on the east side of Zeeb to get across, uh, Zeeb safely, um, on a red light. And, uh, and get access to the, the west side of this. That would also slow traffic, I mean, in and out of Arbor Point. Um, that's something to consider about how the process went tonight. And then the sustainability fair was a huge stuff. Um, I was there and, uh, wasn't able to spend as much time as I would have preferred, but. Uh, I was very impressed with the turnout and with the quality of the people who were presenting and, and that was very well done. Thank you all for the extra time and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have to figure out how to have more dialogue with the road commission on certain things like, because traffic lights don't appear unless they're invaded by the traffic stuff.
All right, anything else?
Erata. A Latin word for books. And, uh, Julian Carey pointed out, and I'm looking here, that the, it was a ten-year levy in two thousand nineteen. So a public hearing, so it was two thousand nineteen, it, it went up from, uh. Um, like a point nine five to a one point three five millage. The original, starting in two thousand nineteen. The, uh, current amount is also for ten years. So a ten-year fire millage from two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty-nine for one point three five mills is in effect. And will be.
So there is some funding. So there is some funding for-
Yeah, there's a, there's a funding mechanism that continues on, you know, for 1.35. So thank you, uh, trustee Carrie, uh, for pointing that out and, uh, but I think the bus millage does, I think, uh, expire next year.
Okay. Anything else?
Move to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, is there support?
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Hume. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 8:50.
Remember Jeff Hume.